Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Regular Board Meeting of Education for Monday, February 13th, 2017. We will roll call Mrs. Serena.
Okay, Simmons?
Present.
Oden? Carroll?
Here.
Marks?
Present.
Forth?
Here.
Hurd?
Here, Coram is present. First on the agenda, we have audience comments. This time, no one has signed up for audience comments. So we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is the superintendent report.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Thanks for coming out. Just a few quick items, couple of really fun ones. Congratulations to Noel Dolan from Western Avenue Elementary for representing our district in third and fourth place at the South Cook Spelling Bee.
Oh.
I was able to watch some preliminary rounds at one of our buildings and then our district event, and our teachers did a great job comparing our students, especially with the new rules, the new processes that teachers put in. So we did very, very well. So it was a great, great event. I want to hand off for a moment to Principal Demetrovich because she's got a great announcement. I know the board has heard a little bit about it, but I asked her to go ahead and speak so that we get this on the record.
Thank you, Dr. Pop, Board of Education. Good evening. I am pleased to announce that one of our amazing fourth grade teachers from Serena Hills, Mrs. Andrea Beatty, is one of the finalists for the Golden Apple Award. So we are very excited. We are preparing for a psych visit by two of the Golden Apple members. We will discuss those logistics with Dr. Pop, but certainly, we are now, it is now open in public today, was the first day that we could announce that. So we are very honored to see excellence in action and certainly that Andrea is a part of our 161 family. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I know on our agenda, we've got, Ms. Crawford's going to do an update about our work with mathematics, but I just wanted to say publicly that thank you to people on that math committee. Everything, I have not been to one of the meetings yet, but everything I keep hearing is incredibly positive, that they're making decisions that are great decisions based on, based on data, and we're going to hear an update tonight, but thank you to that group. It's a, it's a great effort between the teaching staff who live the curriculum and our administrative team that leads the curriculum. So I thank them very much for their work. And then finally, we, you know, the board packet, the big part of it tonight is a whole bunch of different policies, and the board has had a chance to look at the policies. I'm just letting everybody else know what's going on with those. Some policies, when we break them for changes, they're so minute to change. So changing the work here necessarily doesn't even change meaning, but we update them based on advice from the School Board Association, whose attorney passes things on to us. There are times when we need to pass our proposed changes on to our attorney. Everything the packet hears is pretty straightforward tonight. We're just opening up for a dialogue. It's a first reading. We're not asking for any action tonight. We'll ask that at a later meeting to adopt the changes in these policies. But the packet might look big to some people, but do not fear, it's not that bad, and hopefully I'll be able to answer any questions you have about any of the substance of those changes. Again, I thank the board for your service to this community and especially your service to our students. And next on the, I'm going to jump in if you don't mind.
Please do.
I get a little overly ambitious sometimes, so I put a committee report out here from Speed. We heard a report after the last couple of meetings. We've only had one other meeting after that one, and so I'm going to move this one to a later agenda after we have our next meetings. And I go, I go to one of the meetings from Speed, and then Huckabee goes to the other meeting, and then some little sort of report a little later. Our items primarily were focused on some litigation and some personnel issues, and so those we would not necessarily speak about here. Hopefully, we'll have other substantive report to share after our next meeting that happens. So if we could, I'll just send it over to, thank you, President, for the consent.
Okay, fantastic. Okay, next on the agenda, we have some consent agenda items. We have Simmons, Regular Board of Education meeting, January 10th, 2017, executive session meeting, Simmons, January 10th, 2017, special Board of Education meeting, January 23rd, 2017, and executive session, January 23rd, 2017. We also have gifts from all this day from various mentors, for which we are deeply, deeply appreciative of, as well as a trombone for Parker Junior High School with $200 from Michael Peebles. Again, we are very grateful and thank you very much. We also have approval of payroll. And with that, I will entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda items as presented.
So.
Mrs. Huckabee?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Forth. Do we have any discussion? We will call Mrs. Serena.
Okay, Marks?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Forth?
Yes.
Carroll?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Hurd?
Yes, and the motion is passed. Next on the agenda, we have the approval of bills. This month's bills were reviewed by Mrs. Carroll.
Thank you. I actually reviewed the bills and was able to speak to, ran out a couple of questions I had, which were answered with no more questions. So I am asked, making a motion to approve the February bills and the amount of $632,007.66 and $20 cents.
Mrs. Huckabee is first, and I will be the second.
Oh, I thought Mrs. Carroll would be the first.
No, I thought it was Ms. I think.
Oh, I'm sorry. Any discussion? We roll call Mrs. Serena.
Wait, I'm sorry. This is approval of bill?
Yes.
Which is six A. Approval bill.
This is six A, yes.
But we're on consent agenda items right now, right?
No, we.
Which is approved. I'm in another place right now.
That's all right. Any discussion for six A? We roll call Mrs. Serena.
Simmons?
Yes.
Carroll?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Marks?
Yes.
Forth?
Yes.
Hurd?
Yes, and the motion is passed. Next on the agenda, we have approval of personal report. I want to entertain a motion to approve the personal report as presented.
So.
Mrs. Huckabee is first.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Carroll. Any discussion? Yes, Mrs. Simmons?
Yes, we discussed a couple of things briefly in the process.
Sure, absolutely.
We'll bring this back for a second.
Sounds great.
This is our, we are on our first reading of revised policies.
Next on the agenda, we have the first reading of revised policies. Two, 120, two, 200, two, 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 20, two, 250, four, 460, four, 110, four, 130, four, 175, five, one, five, 10, five, 30, five, 125, five, 190, five, 260, six, 15, six, 50, six, 60, six, 140, six, 160, six, 170, six, three, four, zero, seven, one, five, seven, three, zero, seven, five, zero, seven, six, zero, seven, seven, zero, seven, 190, seven, two, five, zero, seven, two, six, zero, seven, three, oh, five, seven, ten, eight, three, zero, and eight, seven, zero.
As I noted before, a lot of these policies are based on updates given to us by press service through the association. The majority of the policies in here are, a lot of them are just a different school code reference or something changed in the school code that we need to note. You'll see anything in there from making sure that we know about transportation, not just of homeless students, but now we added foster children in there. There will be other things in there about when we, purchasing food, for our food service bid, that we have to follow a certain part of the school code. So there are very, there are things that we have to do. It's a matter of memorializing them in our policy manual. There's one in there that is a new policy in our book, and that is dealing with social media. It's, it's pretty much a reminder to staff that what we do outside of school doesn't matter, and to be careful, you have to take care with what we post on social media and make it accessible to everybody.
Two seconds.
Yes. All right, and I just had a moment.
Technology, social media, five, one, five.
Yep. So, other than that, I wanted to just ask if there are any questions on this. We put this out there so that public can take a look at them, so certainly the board can take a look at them, and then we come back and we give them an amount of time before we come back and revisit and actually ask them to approve. At the next meeting, we'll have a few more that'll be first reading, and again, some of those, I think, may cause us to have a little more dialogue than some of these, because they'll be about reimbursements for travel, for staff, for board, for our professional development pieces, and then we'll have the board approved a while back, the use of procurement cards, getting closer to that, but we'll have policy in here focused on that also, so that we're real upfront and open about how we're, how we're dealing with all those financial pieces. So those are, those are coming. Are there any questions about anything that's in the packet currently?
Just, so I skimmed, honestly, I didn't read it that. So my question is there, is there any material change that you would like to point us to? Because I'm seeing a lot of, the reference to, you put names in and change names, so nothing, nothing about this.
No, and you hit it, there's changes of names in there.
I'm sorry.
And we know.
Former departmental, now so.
Yes, and so some of these will come back again when the name is changed again. And so really, the, you know, the one that we had talked about in the office is we need to make sure we were covering everybody for transportation that needed to be covered, and we needed to add, just, you know, I wanted to add that one policy on social media, and then the rest are, are, they're not that in-depth, and they're mostly direction to us.
They're not needing to change, change.
Correct, correct.
Any further questions? Okay, with that, we'll move to the next agenda item, which is the approval of the 2017-2018 school calendar. Dr. Pop?
I appreciate the work of the administrative team that looked at this and my team that originally worked on creating the draft with me. I touched base with our Homewood School District and Homewood's High School District to do some collaboration with them, as has been done in the past. So we know, for example, there are some of our SIP days are aligned with Homewood, so that if we do have topics that we wanted to work with together with them on professional development, we're able to do that. And so we've continued the collaboration that's been there in the past. The difference in this calendar versus this year's calendar would be that we have four more school, school improvement days on there. That is there to reflect the work that you've been hearing about, very regularly here, focused on our math curriculum. We know that it's going to be a huge undertaking, and we need to build time in for staff professional development. I threw out to the principals recently at a meeting, okay, so if this is the calendar, let's start talking about these staff development days. What do you need from the principal perspective to be on there, and then what do we as a district need to be on those days? Our goal is that by the end of this year, all the staff will have the basic idea of the agendas for each of those SIP days, certainly something we could share with parents, because I know parents are always wondering when, you know, my child's coming home, or what the heck are they doing at school? We'll be able to tell them very clearly what we're working on at school. And we wanted to put that together in advance so that, so that we have a very detailed plan on how we're going to make it through this huge change in mathematics. So that's, that's the biggest change that you'll see in here is moving some days around. We also, because of the training that we need for mathematics, we moved an institute day from later in the year to the beginning of the year. So teachers will be in three days before the students will. That will give plenty of time for principals to take care of their local and building business. It'll give some time for teachers to get acclimated and ready, and it'll give a lot of time to do the training that we need to do in math and any other topic we have. So we'll get a good foundation there. Those three days are followed up by some days of school, and then there's a half day that comes in pretty quickly, and that's our ability to say, okay, what's working, what's not, how do we, how do we fix it, move it forward, and then we build those days in somewhat readily into the calendar.
I have a question, and it's probably as it relates to this, and I know that some of it probably has to do with federal dollars and funding, but I know that I've often heard a lot of parents talk about why you start in the middle of the week or towards the end of the week opposed to right there at the beginning of the week. And, you know, that is a concern to a certain degree, and I know we're coming up right up to a half day.
Right, right.
But, so then the next week, right soon here comes the, and I know things have pretty much kind of always been that way, but I do know that that is something that I hear a lot of parents comment to me about, just in general, and probably about starting right there and being part of it opposed to at that beginning of the week.
Right, and part of it in this, in this conversation, we had kicked around bumping up the teacher days a little bit and then trying to get closer, but we still weren't doing exactly what you're saying, it's starting on a Monday. And we decided for continuity for teachers, their families, that we would let them have that last full week of the summer, because that gives, especially folks who do summer school, a little time with their family where they're not, where they're not coming into the office every day or coming to their classroom every day. We let the teachers do the, you know, we did the teachers start on a Monday so that they could get grounded and ready, and then, and then that pushed the student's start date back to that Thursday. I also worked with, and I worked with the two superintendents, my superintendent colleagues, we looked at aligning, as has been done in the past, all the other, the three holiday dates, and as we backed the calendar up from some of those, that kind of dictates where we start. So I would imagine in a, in a scenario where, I think if all buildings were in condition or something, you'd be able to talk about different, even starting at a different time in, you know, August. This pushes it back as kind of as far as we can go and get the year done in this, in this amount of time. So there's, it's almost more, it's almost less science, I think, sometimes than it is the art of trying to fit in all these days that have to be on the calendar. And this is very traditional, in looking at this versus other calendars I've worked on, this, this is very similar. I haven't seen anybody, except for schools that are doing, going with a calendar that runs year round.
Yes.
Yeah, this one, this one's very normal.
Are the holiday breaks aligned with high school again?
Yes.
Just feel some long.
I know.
Breaks. I know it's two weeks, it just feels.
Yeah, I totally agree with the motion, we'll discuss that. I brought it up last year, brought it up here before, I will bring it up again, and I brought it up to Dr. Pop. Really, it looks like this as a district to break on October 9th this year, which is Columbus Day. Now that I am questioning about the day off, I don't understand as a bargain time off for a number of teachers, and that's not a question. It is about the use of the term Columbus Day and just educating ourselves more on what we are celebrating or what we are honoring. There's enough information and education out there, this is, it is time that we hopefully will be looking at that day. We named it something else, had a whole conversation about it, but I'm talking to my district about why we are continuing to honor it. I think he does not honor it, I understand, and I haven't talked to people at the high school and everyone, because he made it do, and the other school districts outside ours do that. And it is something that we really understand that it is, it is just because it's always been that way. So I know it's on the list, it's something I would want to approve this year, I have approved in this district, but I keep pulling it up, and I would prefer it be brought up again for a conversation before this board. It seems like a small thing, it weighs a lot.
Do you mean before it's brought forward?
Yeah, I mean, it's too many fun here, I will approve this today, I will vote for doing today, but I brought it up, probably I'm bringing it up at the right time, that I would prefer us have a discussion about it, because maybe that discussion, okay, or maybe a realistic, really educational time for us to have a conversation, I think it's more packed that conversation.
Okay, so just to be clear, you would like to have a conversation, you would like to approve it?
Yeah.
The dates and the calendar way to.
Yeah, I'm good.
It's off, off.
It's about renaming it.
Okay, so, and at that point, we would amend the name of the day off if we decided as a board, that's the direction we wanted to go. I would suggest in the meantime, if anyone has a position on this to gather information and share with the board, so we can have an open discussion, and then that's something we consider to look at. I know there's some discussion about Casimir Blaski Day. Historically, there are a lot of Polish people living in the Chicago area, so that, as I understood, thirty-some odd years ago, we moved here, because I never heard, Casimir Blaski, being from New Jersey, that it was very important to Polish population. So my understanding of Columbus Day from the East Coast was that it had, it was more of a, it was an Italian celebration, but again, I'm not an expert.
I actually, it's, it was, it actually became a national holiday, and I think it was 1904 to 1906. Does that give you about the Knights of Columbus?
Okay.
I know this because I am, I'm a Catholic, my father is a member of the Knights of Columbus, and also president of, you know, for, we talked about it quite a bit, something that's very, quite a lot of legacy being there, so grandfather, very proud Italian American, so I get it, and it's not in the wrong stance of dismissing something that's important, but we have enough to read a book.
I.
This is not a legacy that we're looking to honor.
Sure, there's a certain, a different historical view.
No, there's one historical view about it, there's a lot of stories. It's a readable and understandable, so that's all, I'm not going to read more.
Okay.
Approving it is, is a readable, educate, and understand what we do.
Okay, thanks.
And you might ask Kathy a question real quick. Kathy, what we sent to the state is the second page of this document, I believe, correct, not the first page. The first page is our local documents.
Correct.
And so what we really are doing is asking the board for the second page, and I think that would be a great place for this discussion to go to, is what do we want reflected, you know, when we bring this discussion back, what do you want reflected on this first page that goes out to our board? But I believe, you know, I'm looking at the second page, and it simply lists, we use the code H O L for holiday on this stuff that we sent in to the regional office to the state then. So I appreciate our.
I'm bringing it because I'm saying, I do that, bring this up in time, taking a vote. I know I shouldn't be voting, I just, I would do better about bringing it forward ahead of time before it comes out.
Yeah, sure. Okay, so I would, I will entertain a motion to accept, to approve the 2017-2018 school calendar as presented.
So.
Second, Mrs. Forth. Any further discussion, comments? Do you roll call Mrs. Serena?
Marks?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Forth?
Yes.
Carroll?
Hurd.
Yes, and the motion is passed. Next on the agenda, we have the math curriculum update. Ms. Crawford?
Good evening, everyone. I'm just going to provide an update on the progress with our math committee, and as I mentioned at the last board meeting, we assembled a team, right now we have 28 teachers and staff members, including our principals, who are participating in the math committee. We've had two meetings so far, and this is facilitated by C E C in their curriculum department. In those two meetings, we've started to dig into what we are looking for in a math curriculum, as well as start to look at the programs that we have on the table and identify the strengths and weaknesses of each program, starting with their assessments. We are using the instructional material evaluation tool, which is the I-Math that's provided by Chief of Core, and that tool helps us to really identify what are our non-negotiable in a math curriculum, what absolutely has to be there in terms of rigor and alignment, so that we can start to eliminate programs and land at the end of this process, well, in the next two weeks, we will land with two programs to pilot. At the end of this process, we will land with one program to implement district-wide next year. We are on course, and we'll be getting, eliminating the final two on the 22nd and the 23rd, and the following week, we'll be ready to pilot our first program. Right now, the programs that are still on the table are Eureka Math, Go Math, Bridges, and Bridges is only K through five. So those three programs are still on the table, and we are still vetting them using the I-Math and looking at the assessments, as well as going into Metric Two, which talks about the rigor and coherence of the programs. I just want to publicly say thank you to all of our teachers and administrators who are participating on the team. It has been a wonderful, wonderful experience so far, and our team from C E C has done a great job of not only scaffolding for us, but allowing us to own the work. Our next year, our goal is to really hit the ground running, as Dr. Pop mentioned with P D, so that we have a unified curriculum for math that is rigorous and aligned to the standards across our district, and then we can build from there. Any questions or feedback? We'd be happy to have that.
Just a question about the ones that are still on the table. Is there particular strength of each, any of the programs that stand out, whether it be the parent module, or ease of use, or technology, is there something that's standing out for any of them?
Yeah, right now, without putting too much of my own opinion on it, because I don't want to cloud the perception of the programs.
If you're, if you're not ready to.
No, 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 I can absolutely, I just, I don't want to put too much of my personal opinion, because we all have preferences, but all of the programs, the strengths of all three of the programs that we have right now is that they are the three highest ranked programs according to the National Ed Report. And it was really important for us in going into this work, that we are able to justify to our Board of Education, to our community, to our students, and to ourselves, that we are looking at the highest ranked programs according to this body of research that has done a lot of the work for us. So, you know, one of our committee members made a great comment at the end of the last meeting, that we're grappling with these three really rigorous programs, we can't make a bad decision according to the national research on each one. Right now, what we're looking at is contextually, how do they work for floss more? Are the print materials the right materials to put in our students' hands? Do we, like, the layouts of the programs, do they flow with what we've experienced before, and how do we not make the same mistakes we've made in the past? So I'm really excited about all three of them, because I know that we have the three best on the table.
The criteria on which they rank them high, do you know what went into that? And I only ask, because sometimes like a ranking body might be, these are used right in the beginning, is it based on test scores of kids who have used this before? Like, how do they give rates on there?
Yeah, so there's three gateways on that report. One is focus, one is rigor and coherence, and then the other is usability. And they rank those based on body sampling of teachers that they have reviewed each one, as well as monitoring districts around the nation who have used each program and the effectiveness in terms of student achievement, as well as in what for students. Thank you.
Can you name the three programs?
Yes, Go Math, Eureka Math, and Bridges.
You said it's K through five.
Bridges is K through five, okay, yes. The other two programs are K eight, so we are looking at potentially adding two programs on the table that are K eight, one that's K five, so depending on how the discussions go, there may be a mix of a program for Parker as well as Elementary, but those are options on the table.
So if you went theoretically, hypothetically, if you went with Bridges or K through five, would you then go to one of the other? through five, would you then go to one of the other two for, um, for six through eight?
Exactly, yes, we would have, we would still have the six through eight options from the other two programs as well.
So there's no other program considered six through, just these other two?
Right, not at this time. You know, we really grappled with that at the last meeting. There were other programs, um, that the, that we considered at the first meeting and the tough question that the committee had to respond to is that when we look at the Ed Report nationally, uh, there's no reason for us to not look at a, a program that's not the highest rated. We deserve the best, the best is available to us, there's no reason to look at any programs that aren't bringing it highly.
So just one last question. And so, and I don't know the number or what percentage of students in our district is a fact, but it's, what about the, the students who are sort of beyond that K eight level? What will be available to them? What are their programs that should be piloting for that as well? So how, how does the district plan on addressing that percentage of kids?
Yeah, really good question. All of the programs that we're looking at have extensions beyond, um, even if it's not a high school program, they have, um, acceleration extensions included in them. And that was one of the things that the Ed Report vetted for and that we looked at as well. On the other side of that discussion, all of the programs also have the supports built in to pull up students who are coming in or are already behind grade level. So to recap, the twenty-second and the twenty-third, the committee will be making final determinations on the two programs that we will pilot. We will be communicating to parents, which will be the first program, and we will also be posting that information on our website. And my office is working with vendors, we have them on hold basically this week to know, um, next week whether it's a green light for them and they are preparing the materials out to us.
And the, uh, purpose of letting parents know is just to, here's an update on what's going on or is there an update? Well, parents, is there any interlace with this outside of one sixty-one? Parents be able to see global parents?
Yes, all of the programs that we looked at, we asked them to make available to us their, uh, whatever digital suite they have available for parents to access at home and some of the programs have, are giving us more than others, but there will be, that will be available on some level. Also, we want to let parents know, um, that you will see different materials coming home. You will see different, um, papers coming home or different assignments based on what we're piloting, so we just wanted to make sure that parents are aware of that and to look out for it.
And, and this may have already come up, but is there, um, the book that would go into these programs or is it distributed, uh, materials that would go home? How does, how does it kind of look in terms of, I guess, in, in response to some of the questions that have been asked?
Sure, um, all of the programs that we're looking at have workbooks as well as curriculum available, but on different levels. Go Math is a, um, Putin influenced, so it's a, a full-scale, um, lots of workbooks and pieces with it. Bridges and Eureka are online-based curriculums, but they all provide, you have the option to order books, you have the option to order the curriculum, which we are definitely threatening to do.
Okay.
I have a question, so does this mean that any outdated material or any books that we have will go away once we break in? Is, what's, what are the choices or the decision?
Sure, so in terms of the pilot, um, for this year, it's really important, uh, we're struggling with the teachers, that we are in the middle of the school year, we are teaching, so we can't, um, just throw out everything that we're doing right now and put this on top of it. So the way that C E C is facilitating the pilot this year for us, we are using the pilot materials to help fill the gaps in what we're working on right now. Looking at next year, when we adopt something fully, it is my intention that this curriculum that we select will become the base curriculum for everybody across the district, so there will be expectations and non-negotiables around what teachers need to use so that we have consistency and coherence across the district. And then teachers have, um, the, the ability certainly and the right to add their own creativity and their own ideas on top of that, but it's really important that the entire district gets access to the base. So, um, in terms of materials that are in use right now as the base, this curriculum that we're selecting will replace that next year.
Any further comments or questions? Well, thank you very much, Ms. Sarah. Next on the agenda, we have the business items. Next, we have executive session. At this time, the board will be entering to executive session, discuss management of personnel, five I L C S, one slash due to one. Will entertain a motion to enter into executive session. Uckby? Can you sell a second? Can you roll call Mrs. Simmons?
Okay, Worth?
Yes.
Carroll?
Yes.
Marks?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Uckby?
Yes.
Yes, the motion is passed and that will be an executive session for around fifteen minutes and a half out. We are back to the integral concession. Next on the agenda, we have approval of personnel report. I will make the motion, entertain the motion to accept personnel report as, as presented. Marks is first, second, this is Uckby. Any discussion? Can we roll call Mrs. Supreme?
Okay, Marks?
Yes.
Uckby?
Yes.
Worth?
Yes.
Carroll?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes, the motion is passed. Will entertain a motion to end the regular board meeting. Uckby?
Second.
Second? Marks? Can we roll call, oh, all of them are say aye?
Aye.